Just wanted to thank everyone who's here tonight. Like she said, my name is Charlene Peterson and I work for New Jersey School Boards. But I was actually a board member for 10 years in Hanover Township, so I just live right in the next town over here. And have had the pleasure of working for New Jersey School Boards for 10 years now. And so I serve all of the school districts in Morris County and Essex County. So I have about 65 districts, so I'm a busy lady, but appreciate the opportunity to be able to see how different boards do things and then to be able to help boards in their work. So I help them do training. And, you know, it's not that often I get the opportunity to talk to people who are considering running for the board. So we really appreciate, you know, having this opportunity to speak to you earlier. Once if you do decide to run and you do fill out a petition, then we do have training that for, we call a candidate's briefing, for everyone who's a candidate. And, you know, we'll make sure that anyone who is interested is aware of those nights. And then, once you win the election, we will also have another training. Again, trying to get you as much training in as possible before you actually sit in that seat, because you'll find out that there's a lot to be done. And as a new board member, sometimes the more you come in knowing, the easier the transition. So I'm just going to take you through some slides here, just to kind of help you understand that role. And then, you know, please feel free to ask questions, because that's really, you know, tonight it's really for you. And just kind of, you know, wanted to start out by saying, you know, we tell boards that one of the most important things, you know, our work is all based on student achievement. And when you have the opportunity to come into a meeting like I did tonight and see all the recognitions that were taking place and all the students that were here, the board members will tell you that that's what it's all about. So all the work that you do, all the time that you spend, all the meetings that you go to, it's really about being able to acknowledge the work of your students and just be able to be so proud of all the work that they do. So it was great for me to have the opportunity to be here tonight and to see it in action. And I said it was a very efficient process, yeah. So I'm just going to go ahead and get started here. So this is just kind of the agenda of some of the things that I'm going to go through. So first, I'm going to start out though with some questions for you, because one of the things that we have found is that sometimes there's, you know, a difference in understanding of what it is that the board really does. So here's the first one. And so this is to everyone who's not a board member already, because you guys hopefully will get the answer right. So which of the following positions report directly to the board? Superintendent, business administrator, assistant superintendent, principal, all of the above? Who do we think reports directly to the board? Superintendent? Okay, anyone else? All of the above? Okay, let's see. Just the superintendent. So we tell the boards they only have one employee and that's it, the superintendent. And then everyone else reports to the superintendent. So that's why it's important that when we do our work, we follow the chain of command and all, everything that we do works through the superintendent, recognizing that that is our only employee as a board member. Okay, how about this? When can a board member observe and evaluate a teacher? Can they do it anytime with advance notice? Only when they're making a decision on tenure? Anytime with advance notice except for their own child's teacher or they are prohibited from doing so? Which one? What do we think? I'm sorry, which one? Okay. Okay, let's see. You guys are good. It's a good thing you're here tonight, then. You guys got some good candidates, it looks like. Okay. How about the superintendent is recommending candidate A for a position, but a board member really likes another candidate better. What can they do? Only vote on candidate A. With a simple majority, select any candidate from the finalists, or need a two-thirds majority to overrule the superintendent. What do we think? Only vote for candidate A? Let's see. You're right. So the board, the board can't hire, the board can't fire, the board can just approve or disapprove recommendations from the superintendent, that that's the superintendent's responsibility to make those recommendations. Can a school board member post their personal opinions, which are negative of staff members, on Facebook? Well, you would think so, right? Okay, so you guys did really good here. So we're going to now look at kind of, you know, recognizing that, once we are a board member, a lot of times I hear board members talk about themselves and talk about ourselves as volunteers, but we're really elected public officials. And with that comes responsibility. So we know then that part of that responsibility is that we have to take training, there's a code of ethics that we're responsible for, and as a public official now, our communication is also a public record. So we have to recognize then that, you know, that that's our accountability or responsibility to the public that elected us. And, you know, sometimes I've had a board member say, you know, "Sometimes I feel like I have a hand tied behind my back." And I said, "You know what? In a way, you do." But that's really what your responsibility is as being an elected public official. You have to hold the confidence of the people that elected you and avoid any conduct that, you know, might be in violation of that confidence. So if we think about then, you know, why do we have a board? So, you know, as we think about all the different positions or all the different roles in a school district, recognizing that there needs to be kind of that body that's taking that, you know, we say we're taking that 30,000-foot view of the district, we're kind of looking down, you know, kind of that really wide angle lens at what's going on in the district. And really, you know, we're accountable to the community and making sure that the work that we're, that the district is doing really reflects the aspirations that your, that your community wants for its students. So we are accountable to that. And, you know, so it's important then that we are, you know, giving a voice to our community, recognizing the importance of the taxpayers in our community, and knowing that, you know, that there needs to be some accountability, right? And so that's the board's responsibility, is to provide that oversight and provide that accountability. So having said that, then, you know, we recognize that, you know, New Jersey is different in a lot of places in that kind of the number of school districts that we have, you know, for the size of state. People are really surprised when they hear that there's 580 school districts. But really, New Jersey School, you know, to New Jersey, local control is really important and, you know, recognizing that the work you do in your community, that you know that better than anyone else. And so that's why we have always, you know, continued to work to complete that. So then, how do we, you know, how do we get our authority? How does it flow? So it really starts from the state. It kind of gives the legislator, gives the power to govern, that kind of delegates it to the State Board of Ed. The State Board of Ed then gives it to the Department of Education, and then the Department of Education, then we are their local representatives, kind of say that we're like their boots on the ground, that all the initiatives, all the requirements that need to be carried out in a district, we're the ones then at the local level that are responsible for making sure that that happens, and we're held accountable to that. And sometimes it was difficult, you know, there were times, you know, kind of when the pandemic first started, where there were things coming down from Trenton, things in the executive orders, that parents and community members were questioning and saying, "Why are we doing this?" But the board really was held accountable to the code of ethics, and, you know, part of the code of ethics was saying that you are responsible for these things. So we recognize sometimes that being an elected public official is not always easy. And sometimes, you know, you're put in situations that your friends and neighbors are going to be questioning and, you know, wondering why we're doing the things we're doing, but recognizing that we have responsibilities. And that responsibility is really, you know, everything comes down to the students. When we talk about the decisions we need to make, when we talk about the conversations that we have, it all comes down to the students. And one of the things that really kind of makes it different when you're sitting on this side of the board table, is that people can come to these meetings and they can come with a concern about a particular situation, a particular grade, a particular school. And when you consider that, when you're a board member, you have to look at it through the lens of, how is this impacting every single child in the school district? Because every child is your child. Every child is who you're responsible for. So as much as you can have empathy for what this person is asking, the lens through which you're making decisions is that lens of what's in the best interest of every child. So, you know, we wanted to kind of first make you aware of, okay, what are the legal requirements to run for, warn to be a board member? So you have to be a citizen, you have to live in your district for at least a year, be able to read and write, be registered to vote in the district, can't have a contract with or a claim against the district, you can't be the mayor or a member of any other governing body, and can't be convicted of certain crimes. And also should have a pair, you have to be at least 18 years old. And that's one of the things that in a couple districts ended up having high school seniors on their board, because part of that requirement. So think about all the challenges and the questions that that brought with it, right? We also now, you know, one of the things that the state has changed is, you know, we are required to have a background check, required to have fingerprinting. And it used to be that you could, you know, sit and get sworn in first before those results came back, and then they were finding that there were too many results coming back in that weren't good results. So now it has changed in that you cannot be sworn in until the results are back. So for those that have a November election, you know, there's typically a couple months, you know, in between then and the January when you do get sworn in, to allow adequate time for that to happen. So want to make sure then that, you know, that you have resources or know where to find resources, if you are interested in running for the board. So know that we, you know, it starts out with a nominating petition, right? We have to get a petition signed, we have to get 10 signatures on our petition. So you can get that either through the county clerk, New Jersey School Boards has it on our website. You can choose to run as an individual, you can choose to run on a part of a joint petition. So those are all options that you have. We have what we call a candidate's kit on our website that has all kinds of information for you, because again, we want to give you the opportunity to be as informed as you possibly can, starting this process. And then the state also has a compliance manual for you that looks kind of more at the financial and kind of, you know, the campaign contributions and those types of things. So not actually the, kind of the role, but more kind of that end of it. So again, making sure that you have access to all that information. So this presentation will be, you know, I guess you have it right there too, right? But that has the links and the information on there where to find things. So I had mentioned this, this school ethics act a little bit just a minute ago, and that really is kind of, like I said, what distinguishes us. This is what identifies us as being an elected public official, and this is what is the basis of all of our accountability to the people that elected us. And just kind of wanted to, you know, let you know that we're really held to a high standard of not only avoiding conduct that's in violation of public trust, but also conduct that could leave a justifiable impression. So even if there's nothing wrong with it, but it leaves the impression that there could be, that is the standard that you are held to. So as part of the ethics that we talked about and those responsibilities, we're going to be asked, you would have to file disclosure statements that would identify, you know, financial contributions, identify relatives that you might have, just to see if there's any conflicts that you might have as a board member. We're required to have training, so New Jersey School Boards is the provider of that training. And one of the things that we've learned is that you are really, board members are the only elected public officials who have mandated training. So we're the most highly trained public officials in the state. So for your first three years, you need to have training in each year of those first three years. And one of the things that the state just changed is, it just happened this past February, is saying, "Okay, we want to get you, new board members, we want to get you trained sooner." So for years two and three, you have a full year to finish the training, and that was the case with year one. But now, as of this February, anyone who gets on the board after this past February now has to complete that new board member training within your first 90 days. So again, emphasizing the importance of getting you trained as early as possible. Again, there, I will look at a couple instances where we might have conflicts of interest, where we might not be able, we talked about the relatives, we talked about the money. There might be times when we're not able to participate in votes because of those situations. So we'll look at that in just a minute. And then, that code of ethics that I had talked about, so there are tenants that we as board members are held accountable to all the time. Not only when you're sitting at a board meeting, but in everything that you're doing. So it is something that you are always held accountable to. So the state recognizes that you don't lose your First Amendment rights, you don't, you know, that you are a parent, you are a community member, but saying that you have to exercise those rights within the code of ethics. So that's why kind of the person said about the hand tied behind their back, because, like I said, that, that is something that you are held accountable to all the time. So in looking at those conflicts of interest, basically saying that you couldn't have any kind of a business interest, you know, anything that would involve any kind of money, there would, like, say there was a situation where a board member was an accountant, some of the teachers were their clients, and then when they got on the board, said, "Well, can I still keep doing this?" And the answer was no, because that would, you know, be a conflict. So it will be things like that where there might be any financial interest that you'd have to separate yourself from. Also, the district cannot hire your relative if you get on the board. Again, to kind of keep that separation. And if your relative already works in the district, you know, that can't stop you from running for the board. But if your relative already works in the district, then there are things that you will not be able to participate in. You will not be able to evaluate the superintendent. If the district were to search for a superintendent, you would not be able to participate in that. And then you also probably would not be able to participate in negotiations when the, you know, when the board needs to negotiate with the local bargaining units. So those are things then, that when we talk about having conflicts and not being able to participate, it would be typically for those types of reasons. So we recognize that we are a public body, right? We do our work in public, we're accountable to the public. So that what holds us accountable, or what the public right is, is that they have the right to have advance notice, so they need to, you know, they have the right to know about our meetings. And then, what qualifies a meeting is when a majority of the board comes together and they are going to talk about business that will impact the public. That then is what constitutes a public meeting. So this board typically meets twice a month. So again, recognizing that we do our work in public, but there are times that there are exceptions, that boards will, you know, meet, use committees. And the reason that boards are able to do that is that, you know, to have conversations that have less than a quorum of the board. When, when a majority of the board is together, only the majority has the ability to make decisions. Only the, you know, the majority of the board can act. When we work in committees, when we are together with less than the majority of the board, we can talk together, we can identify recommendations, but recognize that that's as far as it can go. That the board can only act on public business when it is with, you know, a majority of its fellow board members in public. So that's why committee meetings can be held outside of the, you know, outside of a public meeting, because it's less than a majority of the board there, and they are unable to make any decisions, take any action. They can only make recommendations to the board for board action. So we also recognize, you know, you are aware that there's times when the board will make a motion, that it's going into executive session. So the state has identified nine different reasons that said, "Okay, we know you're a public body, but there's times that you need to go outside of the public eye to have discussions." And the reason for those is typically to protect the rights of others, to protect the rights of students, protect the rights of your staff, protect the legal rights of the district, to talk about negotiations, to talk about your safety and security plans, things that, you know, again, you're protecting the rights of someone. And we also know too, the importance of having our public participate in the work, right? You know, we say that if we are here, you know, making sure that the work we're doing reflects what our community's expectations, the only way we know that is to hear from you. We try and provide different venues and different opportunities to, to hear from you, but a board meeting is always one of those opportunities that's open to you. And it wasn't always the case, I think it was in 2008, that the state changed and said, "Okay, now every single one of your board meetings that's open to the public has to have a public comment, period, to it." So this way, it allows the board, you know, typically before they vote on something, you'll see that most boards have two, kind of two times when there's public comment, and typically the first time is about agenda items only, because we need to know, "What do you think?" So before I vote on it, what's important to you? So then, I'm responsible, if I'm a board member, for casting an informed vote. So I know things that I think, I know things that I read, but you may bring up something that I hadn't thought of before. So that's why we like to hear from you then, before we cast those votes, and then recognize, because this is our time to do our business, when you think about the fact that this is like a multi-million dollar operation here, right? And the board can only conduct its business when it's here in public. So we do know that we have to get to the public, get to our business that we have to do. So then, that's usually why the board waits until the end of the meeting then, if people have other things that they would like to bring up for consideration. So we know then that, from the public perspective, we can't limit, or, you know, we can't stop what people are saying, we, you know, or we can't stop them on content. What we can do is, we can, through policy, we can identify time limits, we can identify that it only be a certain number of minutes, you know, we can, you know, make some restrictions based on policy, but we can never make a restriction based on content. So we are going to the page about governance as a choice. So recognizing that we, when we run for the board, we're, we're running as an individual, right? We may have certain platforms, we may have certain areas that we were interested in, that encouraged us to run for the board. We recognize that once we are here on the board, we are a part of a team. We can only accomplish things as part of our team. So essentially saying, it's a choice. Do we want to come together as a team? Do we want to identify those things that are important, that we all agree on, establish those priorities, and do the work that's necessary to accomplish that, so that we're all rowing in the same direction on the best interest of the students? Uh-huh. Or do we want to be a collection of individuals all moving in different directions, recognizing that we're not going to be as successful as we can if we're all working together as a, as a team? So as individuals, one of the things sometimes we don't always realize is that we don't have any more rights than any other member of the public. The only way your power or authority comes, again, is when you are seated at a legally constituted meeting with your fellow board members. That that is how we make a difference. And again, recognizing that we only have one vote, and the board works together as a team. So, you know, kind of one of the things I always say to board members is, you always get your say, but you don't always get your way, right? So you're able to, you know, come to the meeting, you are able to, you know, speak your opinion, you are able to make your thoughts known, but then recognize then that there is the wisdom of the body then. The body has the right to reflect and consider what you're saying, but then it's up to the majority to decide what they think is in the best interest of the students. And then we know that we are held accountable then to supporting that majority of decision. We had our say, we get that this is the way a board operates. So now, if we're going to move forward with a decision, we're responsible then for backing up that decision, because we know that we had the opportunity to say what we thought, and now recognize that, you know, the board either could have went in the direction we were hoping for, or if it didn't, either way, we support the work of the board majority. So when it comes down to our role, so what is it we really do? What is it we're responsible for as board members? So essentially, we provide guidance through the district, through the policies that we develop and approve. So that gives the superintendent, the administration, the guidance that they need to carry out the work of the district. We're responsible for kind of that high-level planning of, you know, we plan when we do the budget, we plan when we set goals. You know, every year, part of the superintendent's evaluation process is based on district goals. What are those three or four things we think are so important to move the district forward that we're going to hold the superintendent accountable by putting them in their evaluation? So as a board, you have a part in that discussion. So you are, and we say you're helping determine the what. What is that direction? What are those priorities? But then recognize that when it comes time to the how, we step out. That's not our lane. The how is the work of the administration, and then we hold the superintendent accountable through the evaluation process. So that's then the, kind of the oversight and appraisal piece of it. And then, again, the importance of, you know, the role of our community in the work that we do. So again, as we think about, you know, one of New Jersey School Board's famous saying is that we don't run the schools, we always, that we make sure they're well-run. So this is kind of essentially saying that, that we don't run the schools, but the way we make sure they're well-run is through setting those goals, through holding the superintendent accountable. You know, we are responsible for approving the budgets, we represent the public during negotiations, we hire the superintendent, we evaluate the superintendent, and then, like I said, our policy is how we provide that direction. So then people's, you know, so then we say, "Okay, well then, how really does our role differ from the superintendent?" Recognizing that we do need to work together with the superintendent as a team, say that the superintendent is an ex officio member of the board, the superintendent's an important partner, we need to work together with the superintendent to move the district forward. So together, like I said, we're kind of that governing body, the superintendent is simply the CEO. Again, our focus is on the what, not the how. We're looking at that big 30,000-foot view, where the administration is examining the day-to-day, what's happening, what's going on, what needs to be, you know, looked at. From the policy perspective, we're developing and approving it, but then the superintendent is the one that needs to carry it out, needs to give us recommendations about what's working, what's not working, and then let us know, once we've put a policy into effect, is it doing what it was supposed to? And then, again, those roles of us in our oversight and accountability, and the superintendent being the executor, being the one running the district. So together then, we have that, that partnership. So again, that, the importance of that relationship, recognizing that the superintendent makes the recommendations on hiring, the board votes either positively or negatively, the board evaluates the superintendent, and the importance of it being a collaborative relationship. I had already mentioned that we only have one employee, that's the superintendent. So the, so that, where that becomes really important is, there are going to be so many times when you are going to be approached, when you are going to be asked to fix something, when you are going to be asked to take care of something. So what do you say then, if this, if we're going through the chain of command, and we know that it's not our job, right? We don't run the district, we don't have any authority to fix anything, but what do we know? We should know the chain of command, we should know who to refer them to. If somebody comes to you with an issue, say, about a classroom, the first thing you would say is, "Have you talked to the teacher? Have you tried this? Have you..." So again, recognizing that at no point do you say, "Oh, I'm a board member, sure, I'll take care of that for you." Again, recognizing that that's not our responsibility and the value of the chain of command. And then also importantly, that we work together as a board team. So if I'm an individual, I can't direct the work of the superintendent. Let's say I got on the board and I'm excited about this, and I want this, 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 and this, but I'm doing this outside of my fellow board members and just asking the superintendent for something. This would say that an individual board member, again, we said we have no more rights than any other member of the public, right? What I have the right to do is bring up my idea at a board meeting, and then if a majority of my board members agree with me that that's a good idea, that it's something that we might want to move forward with, then that is what directs the superintendent, not me thinking I can have whatever I want and I can get whatever information I want because I'm a board member now. What that does is, that gives me a voice. That gives me a voice to, to talk to my other board members about, and then, again, provides the opportunity for the majority to either agree or disagree with what I'm asking. I'd already mentioned a little bit about the use of committees, and the reason why boards use committees is just because of, you know, find all the work that comes before you, and it is too hard to do everything together when you think about all the different responsibilities that you have. So when you break down into smaller committees, you can develop some expertise in an area, you can take that coin and you can flip it over, and you can look at all different alternatives, so that when you're coming back to the board, you're coming back to the board with a recommendation. And then the, the rest of the board is trusting that you did your homework, you did the leg work for them. That doesn't... That doesn't mean that they can't reach out to you and say, "Help me understand why you're doing this," because at the end of the day, I'm still responsible for casting an informed vote. So I need to get the information I need in order to do that, but appreciate the fact that you and your committee are helping do some of that legwork so that I do now have someone I can go to to get some more information from. So this, I just kind of listed the, the standing committees that the board has. So this would give you kind of an idea of some of all the different work and the conversations that committees have working together. So just kind of some keys or thoughts as we kind of think about, you know, what can we do? How, how can we help make a difference and be successful as new board members? Again, that responsibility of working together as a team. We're elected as an individual, but once we get here, we're part of a team. Again, making sure that, that, that learning is on us, casting an informed vote, making sure I've done my homework so that I do that, being respectful, listening to opposing views. You know, I feel that boards a lot of times make the best decisions. When people have different ideas and different thoughts about it, then you can hear all the different angles and know that when the board finally did cast a vote, that it did consider other alternatives. So we need to make sure that we are being respectful, that we're listening and recognizing that we're all here for the kids, right? And we all want to make sure that we're doing the best that we can for the students. And then it, it is a time commitment, but you'll, you know, most board members I talk to say how rewarding of, you know, of a commitment that it is. And like I said, opportunities like tonight to see the accomplishments of all of your students is what helps makes that worthwhile. So this is just kind of a reminder of when the, the election is. Our, you know, our petitions are due that last Monday in July, which this year it's the 31st. So you have a little bit of time to, to think about it. Your petitions are due to the county clerk by four o'clock that day if you should decide to run. And like I said, you know, please make sure that you go back to New Jersey School Board's website and, you know, make use of all the information that's on there for you. Okay, now I have done a lot of talking, so I want to see if any of you have any questions for me.